The June 11th, 2025 regular city council meeting for the city of Calabasas. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Protem Bazagian and council members Albrecht Shapiro, Weintraub, as well as city staff. If you'd like to provide public comment, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk. Members of the public who need hearing assistance can request a device from the city clerk as well. We'll begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise and join me?
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We did meet in closed session. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We did meet in closed session to discuss the matter of existing litigation for the city of Calabasas versus the county sanitation district, as well as two matters of potential litigation, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We begin tonight with a very exciting presentation from the California Parks and Recreation Society Board to present a service award of excellence to our community services department. Nicole McNeil, the Assistant Deputy Director for the City of San Diego Parks and Recreation, will present the Service Award of Excellence. Ms. McNeil, please come to the podium.
Hi, here I am. Thank you so much for having me, Honorable Mayor and city leaders. So I'm on behalf of the California Parks and Recreation Society, I am here tonight. The CPRS Annual Awards Program celebrates outstanding examples of quality facility and park design, programming accomplishments, effective communications, community leadership, and professional successes that take place daily in our profession. Through our five award categories, we highlight the people, places, spaces, programs, and stories that make communities like Calabasas special. Our first award, the Champion of the Community Award, we are presenting to the Caring Calabasas Club. The Champion of the Community Award honors outstanding efforts that enhance community well-being through parks and recreation. Tonight, we recognize the Caring Calabasas Club, a volunteer-driven program that embodies compassion, creativity, and intergenerational connection. Founded and led by Mrs. Carol Davis, the club began as a way to engage seniors during the isolation of the pandemic and has since grown into a citywide force for good. From making thousands of lunches for the Hollywood Food Coalition to decorating bags with hand-drawn messages, this group brings joy and dignity to those in need. Their outreach extends to foster children, military families, and underserved youth through birthday cards, stuffed bears, knitted items, and even Braille books in partnership with the Braille Institute. With over 1,200 seniors and youth involved and more than 100,000 items donated, the Caring Calabasas Club is a shining example of how parks and recreation can build bridges, compassion, and community. We sincerely appreciate Mrs. Carol Davis and the lasting impact she and her club members have made, not only in Calabasas but in the surrounding communities as well. The Caring Calabasas Club truly exemplifies what it means to be a champion of the community. Congratulations and thank you to our Community of Excellence Award winners, and especially Ms. Carol Davis.
You guys want to come take a picture? Sure. It is the Caring Calabasas Community.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Shall we have a picture?
There we go. Can we have a few of you guys come over here? Okay. Three, two, one. Get one more. Three, two, one.
If you don't... I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you to all the volunteers that make this happen. It's not just me. Everybody does it, especially to Betsy, my co-chair, who has really pitched in a lot for me during the last six months. Secondly, I'd like to thank the city council for supporting us and making us an award-winning group that's recognized statewide and nationally. And last but not least, I'd like to thank... Where is she? I'd like to thank Erica for submitting us for that award and for writing the submission. As I said to her, "You can't win the lottery unless you buy a ticket." And she's the one that bought the ticket and helped us to win the award. So thank you very much. And this is really beautiful. Thank you very much. This will stand out among the other plaques. Thank you.
Much deserved. Thank you.
And before we get to the next presentation, do my councilmembers want to make any comments? I know you do, Ed.
I could go on and on and on. It's just amazing. And a bit of history, when the Senior Center was just a figment in one person's imagination, that person called our house, and my wife answered the phone. So I thought it was a marketing call. I said, "Give me the call." And we got to know each other, and little by little, we pushed. And from that moment on, we were connected. You connected me with everybody else, and together as a unit, there we have the Senior Center. But the problem was, now that we have it, what are we going to do with it? So the committees were formed. Carol, you're right in the middle of all of it. You led the charge the whole way, executive committee, programming, the staff. You know, it's just, it's wonderful. Just fantastic. I can't be happier in the neighborhood, the community. So thank you again.
Thank you. David?
I just want to say congratulations, and it's amazing. Tonight, we're talking about the budget. One of the best expenditures we have provided in the last years has been a little bit of money that you came here and asked for to start this wonderful Caring Calabasas Club. And congratulations to all of you, because I know, Carol, you led it, your co-chair, but all of you got involved. You brought in, our staff helped, our community helped, and you brought in even outside groups or agencies, even at some point Caruso, and many others, and students. So it is fantastic. Keep it going, keep it going, and thank you.
Alicia?
Just wanted to say, where are you? Congratulations to everyone. What I love about this group is there's always something new and fresh, and the ideas keep coming, and the support from our staff and just the community. So congratulations, can't wait to see what's next.
James?
Yes, I thought the comment about how it was founded was particularly important because, Carol, you helped to keep the community informed and active at a time when it was a lot of depression over the COVID-19 pandemic, and there really weren't a lot of things that could be done recreationally. It was a wonderful idea, and it took off, and I'm so glad you did it. And I've come to some of your activities, and I've seen the enthusiasm and the energy. So you're very much appreciated, and the award is well-deserved.
And I'll just finish up by saying, when you first came to us and asked for some money, it was a very small sum, and we knew that you could do great things, so we gave you even more. And, you know, that little bit of a budget that we carved out for your organization, for your volunteers, for all of you who've been participating in this, it's well worth every penny, because it not only helps those in need, but it builds community, and you guys have done a fantastic job of that. Thank you.
I'm so relieved when you're talking about the budget.
As far as I know, it's not on the chopping block tonight. All right. Congratulations again. I believe we have a second award this evening, and that would be for our community services department.
Yes, that is correct. We sure do. Okay, our second award for marketing and communications Award of Excellence goes to the premier recreation brochure created by none other than the Parks and Recreation Department. This award celebrates innovative, effective communication strategies that engage communities and promote recreational services. The city of Calabasas Premier Recreation Brochure exemplifies excellent in public communication, designed not only to inform but to inspire. Special recognition goes to Zacharet Osorio, who led the coordination and compilation of this vibrant, accessible, and user-friendly publication. The brochure features local photography, QR codes for quick access to registration and information, and the city's iconic red-tailed hawk logo, reinforcing community pride and identity. It highlights hundreds of programs, dozens of special events, and a broad range of services for residents of all ages and abilities. The brochure has resulted in increased program participation across all age groups, higher engagement, and strong resident feedback praising its design, clarity, inclusivity. This brochure has become a trusted and valued resource for the community, bringing people together and helping them connect with the full spectrum of what the Calabasas Community Services has to offer. Thank you, and congratulations. Come on up, team.
Can we take a photo? You're... You are... That sounds like you earned it.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
And Ms. McNeil, thank you very much for presenting tonight. We really appreciate you being here. And just when she thought she escaped, the next item on our agenda is the Parks and Rec... the Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation, presented tonight by Community Services Director Erica Green.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members. It is an honor for me to stand before you this evening in recognition of July as Park and Recreation Month. I'm privileged to lead an extraordinary team, individuals who bring passion, creativity, and dedication to their work each day, creating meaningful experiences and delivering exceptional programs, services, and events for our community. With the ongoing support of the city council, city manager's office, Parks, Recreation, and Education Commission, fellow city departments, and our incredible community members, we've been able to accomplish a remarkable list of achievements over the past year, including renovated every playground throughout the city, replacing all play structures and amenities with modern and updated equipment, the complete construction of Wild Walnut Park, the full renovation reopening and assumption of operations of the Calabasas Community Center, major improvements to the tennis and swim center, including pool renovations, resurfaced tennis courts, and new LED lighting fixtures, the modernization of the DeAnza Park Sport Court to support multiple sports, the successful delivery of over 55 community events within 52 weeks, a departmental reorganization to enhance service delivery and responsiveness, the introduction of new technologies to streamline and improve operations, and multiple professional awards a couple that we are proud to celebrate here tonight. These accomplishments represent more than just completed projects. They are a reflection of our shared belief in the vital role that parks and recreation play in building a stronger, healthier, and more connected community. To the community services team, thank you. Your hard work, dedication, and professionalism embody the very best of the Parks and Recreation profession. You are the heart of this department. Parks really make life better. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Do we have any councilmembers wishing to speak on this item? Ed, go ahead.
Erica, 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 how much you have done is unbelievable. And tonight, in this room, I never thought we would have two dream teams together. We got the Senior Center Dream Team and the staff that you've put together, and what an operation. So I can't, I think we all agree, deal of gratitude and thank you for the hard work, because you've done it all with a smile on your face all the way. So thank you again.
And I join my colleagues in congratulating you again. I like the T-shirts, it's a good look, much better than suit and tie. Congratulations, what's done with the parks and the opening of the community center has been monumental for the city, and it'll show for decades and decades and many, many, many years to come. And I know you started leagues, and July is celebrations on and on. You've seen a lot of things you're putting together for July to celebrate, which are exciting, and all the new things you have done. The Listening Lounge, last year, the food trucks, whatever it might be, is really appreciated by the community. So congratulations on a tremendous job, tremendous team, and it is a team effort, I know. But congratulations, Erica, you get to get the lead spot, and congrats to all. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate Erica and the entire community services team. You've done so much in your department, and when all of our parks came back online, you didn't just let them sit. You've done so much to activate each space and just looking at all the events that are taking place at each park and making it just so much more than just like playground equipment. It's really amazing seeing these spaces come to life and being enjoyed by so many people. So congratulations to everyone. It's very much appreciated.
And James?
Yes, my colleagues have pretty much said everything. I did want to congratulate Erica and her crew for all their enthusiasm, especially appreciated, I think, are the renovations and reopenings that we've done throughout the last year, the tennis and swim center, the community center. Everything gets a lot of compliments and looks really great, and it's just, it gives a whole new city, it gives the city a whole new look. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I'll just say one more thing before we close out this item. First of all, thank you all for showing up tonight. It's great to see the entire department here in force. I want to remind the public what was shared with us tonight and emphasize something, which is our community services team, their job is to program and schedule events and carry them on. But last year, in addition to their regular full-time job of events, they did the work of our engineering and public works department as well. They built parks, they rebuilt parks, they rebuilt facilities, they... The sheer number of projects that you guys pulled off last year is unfathomable, and the fact that you were able to do that while simultaneously publishing an award-winning magazine and providing more and more services to our community, it's just amazing to see how much you did in one year. So I'm really hoping that this year is a little easier on you guys. Congratulations, and thank you very much. Okay, we're now at the point in our agenda for our sheriff's crime report. Tonight, presenting to us is Deputy DeMatteo.
Good evening. I am Deputy DeMatteo of the Los Angeles Sheriff's Station, and I have the crime report for April. During this month, there were a total of 28 Part I crimes. So let's start with burglary. There were two commercial burglaries, two vehicle burglaries, and eight residential burglaries. Three of the residential burglaries occurred in the Calabasas Park, one occurred in Park Estates, one in Greater Mulwood, one in the Oaks, and two in Calabasas Hills. There is a bit of good news, though, from this. One of the individuals, we believe, was responsible for the Calabasas Hills burglaries, was arrested by LAPD on May 19th. He was taken into custody after a residential burglary attempt in North Hills. Our detective bureau is working closely with LAPD to identify and recover stolen property and to ensure this individual is held to answer. I know eight burglaries is a lot, so I looked into next month to see how we were doing, and for May, there was only one residential burglary, which is good news. So for theft, there were nine petty thefts and five grand thefts. Most of these thefts were retail-based, others included package theft and theft of personal property from homes during service or maintenance requests. We did have two assaults, aggravated assaults. One of those was a domestic violence incident, unfortunately. One incident occurred at the Commons. The report indicated a juvenile pointed a firearm at another juvenile during an argument. I was curious about that, so I followed up with our J-Team, and our J-Team deputies concluded there was no evidence to support this allegation. Unfortunately, it still ends up on the stat sheet. That's it, that's all I have for the month of April. Are there any questions or concerns?
No, no questions really, other than what you reported. I'm glad to see or hear that the statistics are, seem more positive for May. And any tips as we go into summer that people should take caution with, or just take extra precautions, I guess I should say, when they travel?
Yeah, so the, I mean, so the biggest problem that affects Calabasas is theft and burglary. So if you're going to leave for the summer, take every precaution you can to secure your property. If you have any questions on how to do that, you can contact me, and I will come to your house and assist you with that.
Thank you so much.
You know, as ever, the residential burglaries are the primary concern. I mean, out here, that's usually what we get in terms of serious crimes, that's the number one. And, you know, I'm looking at the overall statistics, and I had noted that there were eight in the month of April, but it's really troubling that the year-to-date is 23, and that's equal to all of 2020, which you put in here as a benchmark going back. So in four months, we've accumulated an exact equivalent of what we had for a whole year in 2020. And, you know, I just want to remind everybody that that is probably the most serious crime we see out here on a regular basis, and it really does impact you greatly when somebody's entered your home, even if you're not there. It's just a total violation, and it's not just the loss of the property, it's, you know, not feeling safe in your own home after that. So I just would, I know it's coming up later in the, later in the meeting on the agenda, but I do urge my colleagues to consider that statistic when we discuss whether we're going to cut sheriff services.
Thank you, nothing other than to say thank you and thank everybody at the station, and be safe and well, and we appreciate it. And same question Alicia asked about the summer is important since kids are out of school, there's vacation, there's going to be a lot more going on in the city, so I'm sure the sheriff's station is ready to cover all that for the city. Thank you.
If I can add one more thing, as the summertime's here, and a lot of kids in this area love to ride those electric motorcycles, I just have to remind parents that your kids can't ride those on a public roadway. It's illegal to do that, you've got to have a driver's license to drive those things, and if you're 13, you can't get a driver's license. So I get multiple phone calls a week at my desk for that, and it's an issue that's not going to go away. So if we could just educate the parents to educate their kids, that'd be great. No electric motorcycles in the summer, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thanks always for the report. I was going to mention that about the e-bikes, but, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot. Sunday morning, I had a gang of them behind me at 8:00 in the morning going to TO. And they weren't terrible, but they were right on my bumper, and they were obnoxious, and they're strolling the street back and forth. So they sell the bikes at Best Buy, they're on the floor, they look great. How are you going to prevent an adult father to purchase the bike, and then how are you going to stop a gang of them? I really call them gang, they're groups. You know, they're texting each other, "Let's meet at such and such a corner," and they come out, and then they bond out. It's a real problem.
Yeah, well, if...
They're zigzagging the street, they're jumping the sidewalks back and forth, they're having fun.
Yeah, so if we do stop, want somebody, a minor on that bike, they don't have a driver's license, they're going to get a ticket for driving a motor vehicle without a license, and then their parents are going to get a ticket for allowing a minor to operate a motor vehicle without a license. It's a significant fine.
Could you clarify if a bike has pedals and it's electric? Do you need a license for that?
No. Get a bike with pedals.
So what if a bike with pedals is riding back and forth on the street, hopping curbs back and forth, and there's a group of about six or seven of them? So that's a problem, too.
It is a problem. So, yeah, but also, in an individual I spoke to today about this issue, my best advice is not become confrontational, because you never know who you're dealing with. Plus, you have, these kids have parents who get protective and sensitive that you are treating their child in a specific manner or way. So just call the sheriff's station, or CHP, or wherever you're at, just call 911 and report unsafe reckless driving.
It'd be nice if we could figure out what neighborhoods they like the most, and then just patrol them a little bit more, and, you know, we're all parents, so we're going to treat them kindly.
Well, we've sighted and towed bikes from individuals living in Thousand Oaks, West Lake, Bell Canyon, Woodland Hills, in the Calabasas area, so they're coming from all over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know what neighborhoods they like. They like all of them.
Yes.
Deputy DeMatteo, thank you for your report. I would just add one thing. I love to hear when you share with us that the detective team has apprehended somebody, that somebody's being prosecuted, that a previous crime has been solved. At one point with our reports, you were able to add that to our report, and then when our reports were revised, again, it disappeared. Is there any chance of getting that back in here?
I'm going to try my best. I'll make the recommendation. Sometimes I do discover new information by talking to detectives, but sometimes those investigations last long, or they last quite a long time. So sometimes we forget about it from the crime.
It is a problem. So, yeah, but also, in an individual I spoke to today about this issue, my best advice is not become confrontational, because you never know who you're dealing with. Plus, you have, these kids have parents who get protective and sensitive that you are treating their child in a specific manner or way. So just call the sheriff station, or CHP, or wherever you're at, just call 911 and report unsafe reckless driving.
It'd be nice if we could figure out what neighborhoods they like the most, and then just patrol them a little bit more. And, you know, we're all parents, so we're going to treat them kindly.
Well, we've sighted and towed bikes from individuals living in Thousand Oaks, West Lake, Bell Canyon, Woodland Hills, in the Calabasas area, so they're coming from all over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we know what neighborhoods they like. They like all of them.
Yes.
Deputy De Mateo, thank you for your report. I would just add one thing. I love to hear when you share with us that the detective team has apprehended somebody, that somebody's being prosecuted, that a previous crime has been solved. At one point with our reports, you were able to add that to our report, and then when our reports were revised, again, it disappeared. Is there any chance of getting that back in here?
I'm going to try my best. I'll make the recommendation. Sometimes I do discover new information by talking to detectives, but sometimes those investigations last long, or they last quite a long time. So sometimes we forget about it from the crime report to when we actually find out what's going on, so. But, yeah, I'll make the recommendation and we'll do our best.
And I'm not saying it has to be tied to something that's going on now, because I do know that a lot of times they're solved a year or two later.
Right.
But if we had a section in the report that said, you know, the detective teams had these successes this week, you know, this individual was identified on a flock camera, or, you know, just something there, because we know that our team at the Lost Hills Sheriff Station is working hard, not just reporting the crimes that have happened, but they're doing something behind the scenes. And I'd really like to get that information in front of the public so that they can see how hard you guys are working.
I agree. Sounds great. I'll make that recommendation. Thank you. Great.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, we're now at council announcements, and because he doesn't like being picked on first, I'm going to start with Mayor Protem Bazagian.
Thank you, I don't mind. I don't have any announcements. I mean, I could announce that on the 27th, the Chamber of Commerce is having its 70th anniversary party, but I know the details are going to be probably discussed by somebody who comes here to give chamber announcements. But I will make that brief announcement for now. And we have our 4th of July activities coming up. We have our, we don't have our fireworks show, but we do have our summer splash party at the Tennis and Swim Center, and that's open to the public, free of charge. And we have the Lakeside Fund Run in the morning, co-sponsored by the Calabasas Park Homeowners Association. So please come out, those are longstanding traditions, and we hope to see as many people there as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Weintraub?
Just wanted to say congratulations to all of the graduates. Tonight, we had our middle school graduations, and I know Viewpoint already had their graduation, and the elementary schools, and tomorrow is Calabasas High School. So congratulations to everyone celebrating.
Thank you. Councilmember Shapiro?
I will also add congratulations to all the graduates and all their families. And in following up on the sheriff's report, please be careful, drive safely, there'll be a lot more youth on the streets, on the roads, in the coming weeks. So congrats and be safe.
Councilmember Albert?
Well, I was going to save this for tonight, and especially with community services. We have so many events going on at the parks this summer that if you're a parent, you can't miss. Every park has got something going on every other week, it's just amazing. I would suggest everybody goes to the website, look up community services, and I think your kids will love it. There's food, there's entertainment, it's movies at every single one of the parks, which look pristine, they're brand new. So have fun, give you something to do.
All right, thank you. I'll just add a couple of specifics on those. Coming up between now and our next council meeting is the Dive-In Movie Nights, featuring the movie Cars on June 20th at 6:00 PM. You can register for that at cityofcalabasas.com. Also, the Lost Virginus Creek Cleanup is June 21st at 9:00 AM. I don't believe you have to register in advance, just show up and join us, details are on our website. And then also going on right now is the Capture Calabasas Photo Contest. So if you have an iPhone, or Samsung, or a Google phone, or any phone, or a camera, get some pictures of the Calabasas community and share them with us. There are $100 prizes coming out for those photos, so hopefully you can participate. And then I'm going to take a moment, and I would normally share this at the end of our meeting when we do reports on committees, I want to share with everyone just a quick moment about our League of California Cities meeting, because the speaker at our last meeting, where Mayor Protem Bazagian and myself attended, was the Insurance Commissioner Laura from the state. And this is a question we've all been asking, and we got some answers, and they're good answers, there's some good news coming here. So first of all, he took a little bit of heat for allowing State Farm to raise their rates, but the public should know that beforehand, State Farm's parent company was required to contribute $400 million to the fund to keep things alive. So this was a compromise in order to keep State Farm active here in our Southern Calif, in our California marketplace. More importantly, there's a couple of things that are going into effect in July. One is that new applicants are guaranteed coverage in the state of California now. 85% of new policies written by insurance companies after July must be written in fire-distressed communities. So they cannot write policies to the non-fire-threatened areas without writing 85% of their policies to the areas like ours that are affected by fire. In addition, they must simultaneously move policies out of the fair plan and into regular insurance. Those will be done prioritized based on what ZIP codes have the most number of homes in the fair plan. I don't know, we've asked for the ZIP code list, it's not published yet. I don't know where Calabasas 91301 and 91302 fall, as far as percentage of homes in the fair plan. But what I'm here to share with you is there is relief on the way. This starts in July, we probably won't feel the effects of it for at least a year, because insurance policies are written for a year. And this is for new policies as they start pulling them out of the program. Or I should say, writing for new policies and then moving existing policies out of the fair plan. Lastly, two things to keep an eye on is AB 888, Assembly Bill 888, is providing grants from the state for home hardening. So keep your eyes on that one as it goes through the legislature. And Assembly Bill 1 ties home hardening to your insurance rates. So a lot of things happening that are going to start creating a little bit of relief in our insurance market. Again, I know a lot of you are going to leave before the end of the meeting, so I thought I'd share that this evening at the comment section instead of at the end, when we normally share our league information. Hopefully that was helpful to some of you and enlightening to all of us, or enheartening to all of us, right? Yeah. With that, we're moving on to public comments from the general public. Now is the time for general public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to state their name and city they live in, and they will be allowed three minutes to address the city council on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. The council is unable to respond due to state law, which prohibits the council from addressing any issues not on the agenda, but we are listening and our staff is here. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? If so, would you please fill out a speaker card at the back of the room? So far, I have one speaker card. It is for Mark Levinson.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. I'm Mark Levinson, with the, obviously with the Chamber of Commerce, I live in Los Angeles. It's my pleasure also to emphasize that the council is, the chamber is celebrating its 70th anniversary on the 27th of this month, it's at the country club. The chamber is actually older than the city, and we're thanking everyone for their participation and the close relationship between the city and the chamber, all for the benefit of the working people of this city and the small business people. So thank you for that. It should be a great, it's planned a lot of events that will be announced there, and we're still accepting people to register and attend, so it's a great thing. We're also having a breakfast at Lovey's on the 26th, where people are invited to come in a, just a chamber event, networking event. And the other thing I want to talk about, which has already been broached, is the amazing doing of the Calabasas High School. I had the pleasure of attending the honors ceremony there, and I also had the pleasure of reviewing over 50 applications for scholarships from students throughout Calabasas and in the San Fernando Valley as a whole. And the children, and they're young still, or young adults, are doing amazing things, and their schools are encouraging them and fostering that will to learn, to achieve, and to engage in community service. And the chamber awarded one scholarship this year, went to Matthew Miller, who unfortunately was not at the honors ceremony, he was at school registering. But we did go to see him, actually at school, they arranged to call him in, he was incredibly surprised, an incredible young man, and his father was there to see it as well. The other thing is Fernando Foundation, which I'm a member of, awarded two scholarships to Calabasas students this year. And those scholarships are drawn from the entire San Fernando Valley. We receive applications from every high school there is. And we had two, what I would call amazing, amazing students receive those honors. And that is Jay Patel and the other you all know, Noah Weintraub. Those kids are amazing. And if, I then had the pleasure of sitting through the rest of the assembly, and the awards that went out to our students are incredible, what they have achieved, what they have learned. And I would say our future is in very, very good hands, just by what I saw of those students. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have no other cards? Okay. So we are now moving on to our consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, okay. I do wish to pull two, if I may, just briefly, number eight and number 12. So we'll begin with item number 12, which is the Professional Services Agreement with Michael Baker International, just for a question here. What's that? 12 is a, I'm doing eight, eight and 12, eight first. Mr. McConville, thank you. There's, in the discussion section of the report, it says that there were two city proposals received, one from Michael Baker and one from MNS Engineers. The Michael Baker one was in our packet, the MNS was not. Was there a comparison of the two bids?
Yes, there was competitive comparison between both bids. One was a panel interview, followed by a, well, a panel interview followed by an oral interview of both firms.
So it was qualification-based as opposed to price-based?
Correct.
Okay. And then in the, in the Professional Services Agreement proposal on page 11, I just want to point out that the administrative fees come out of the $250,000 grant? Is that, would that have been the same percentage number for either provider?
Yes, correct. So that rate is set by the CTPG HUD, and they permit up to 15%, if I'm correct, Ron, for administrative fees.
Okay, so there was no financial consideration for this, it was just strictly qualification?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And then for number 12, if I could just, for the citywide fee schedule?
Yes, sir.
This is more of a comment or a question, I guess, which is that I noticed in here that we do have all of our recreation fees as well, as part of our citywide fee schedule. One of the things that we've been anxiously waiting for is a fee study. Do we know when that will be happening for our recreational services?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do not have a set time on that yet. We'll be coming back to the council probably next meeting, if not the first meeting in August, to finalize the plans for the Tennis and Swim Center. That will then give us the green light to move forward with that fee structure that we need to change based on the change of operation there.
And if we had information that we gathered from this study, would we be able to change the fees mid-year, or would we be waiting till next year to make another change in the fee schedule?
We would most likely change the fees mid-year at the conclusion of the study and upon presentation to council.
Okay, thank you. Those were my only two questions? Absolutely, it's open.
Thank you. Just this on number 10, and it's really just a quick question, since I see our CFO there. If our CFO could just briefly explain this item to the public, the GAN appropriations limit, please.
Yes. So the GAN appropriation limit is a dollar limit placed upon all governments in the state of California. We have our appropriation limit, as explained in the report, and it's for the expenses of taxes. And so we comply with the GAN limit, which is part of the state constitution and the calculation, and you can see that we're about $9 million actually underneath our GAN limit, so we have capacity or upward room of spending $9 million if we would happen to collect $9 million more in taxes.
Wishful thinking for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, any other council questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll ask if there's any members of the public wishing to speak on any items on the consent calendar? We have none. Madam Clerk, no cards? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Weintraub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's a request for a development plan review, site plan review, oak tree permit, and scenic corridor permit. Permit file numbers DPR 2019001, PL 190492, PL 1901497, and PL 1901494, to construct a single-family residence with attached two-car garage on a vacant lot, 23408 Valdez Road, APN number 2072030-012. And the city planner, Jacqueline Rackerby, will present the report.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Again, before you tonight is a request for a development plan review, a site plan review, oak tree permit, and scenic corridor permit to construct a single-family residence with attached garage at 23408 Valdez Road. And I do want to mention that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. The notice was also posted on the city's website, as well as throughout the city at all required locations. And staff has not received any public correspondence in regards to the project. So the subject site is located within the Olte Panga area of the city, outlined in green right here. The property is within the Open Space OS zoning district, which is the reason that the project is before the city council tonight. And I do want to clarify that this is not the same as the OSDR zoning district, which is Open Space Development Restricted. This zoning district is just OS. So the OS zone does allow for development, up to a maximum density of one residential dwelling unit per lot. The site is also located within the scenic corridor overlay zone, which is the yellow area that you can see in this map right here, which is due to the fact that the site is in close proximity to Olte Panga Canyon Road, which is a designated scenic corridor. The project site is surrounded by vacant land on all four sides immediately surrounding the site. However, the subject site, as well as some of the adjacent lots, were previously developed, but these structures have since been demolished. Additionally, there are other developed properties along this segment of Valdez Road, just not the properties immediately adjacent to the subject site. So the home sizes in this area in the vicinity range from 692 square feet to 2,740 square feet. Lot sizes in the area range from around 7,000 square feet to around 22,000 square feet. The average home size in the vicinity is 1,720 square feet, and the average lot size is about 10,000 square feet. The proposed residence will be 1,959 square feet in total, and the lot size is 18,542 square feet. So the proposed residence is within the range of home sizes for this area, and the lot is on the larger end of lot sizes in this area. Here you can see photos of the subject site. This photo on the left is the subject site as viewed from the front property line along Valdez Road, looking to the south. This photo on the right is the site as viewed from Olte Panga Canyon Road, which is a designated scenic corridor. So this photo was taken from the rear property line, looking north. And as you can see in these photos, story poles are currently installed on the site. They were installed on March 20th, 2025, which is required for all development within a scenic corridor per the city's story pole procedures. So the proposal before you tonight includes construction of a new 1,959-square-foot, one-story single-family residence, a 472-square-foot attached garage, and associated covered porches and patios at the front and rear of the residence. The project also includes encroachment into the protected zone of eight oak trees, and removal of one 2.2-inch diameter coastlive oak tree. The permits required for this project are a development plan review, which is required to establish setbacks in the open space zone, a site plan review for the actual construction of the residence, an oak tree permit for the encroachment and removal of the one coastlive oak tree, and a scenic corridor permit because of the fact that the development is in a scenic corridor overlay. And Calabasas Municipal Code Section 17.62.070 stipulates that development plan review permits require the planning commission to hold a public hearing, and then make a recommendation to the city council, with the final decision on the project being by the city to the city council, with the final decision on the project being by the city council, which is the reason that the city council is reviewing the project tonight. And again, a development plan review is required for this project because of the fact that the site is within the open space zoning district, and the municipal code requires a development plan review as the permit type required in order to establish setbacks for all projects within the open space zone. Here you can see the proposed site plan. The new one-story residence and garage is shown in blue, and the proposed new driveway to access the residence is shown in yellow and accessed off of Valdez Road. The perimeter of the oak tree protected zones at the west and southern areas of the site are shown in green, and the protected zone of the 2.2-inch diameter oak tree proposed for removal is shown with the dashed red outline right here. So, as you can see, the tree is too close to the proposed residence and requires removal. However, this removal will be properly mitigated by either relocating the tree if possible or replacing the tree on-site. Olapanga Canyon Road is not served by a sewer line, so as with all the other homes on Valdez Road, the proposed residence is required to have a septic system, and that area is shown here in orange. These diagonal lines you see in the northeast corner of the site are the onsite fire turnaround area, which is required for this project because of the fact that the paved Valdez Road actually does not connect with Olapanga, which you can see is here, the two streets connect farther to the west, but the actual physical roadway does not. So, Valdez Road essentially functions as a cul-de-sac, which is why the fire turnaround is needed on-site. Because the subject site is located within the Open Space OS zoning district, there are no minimum required setbacks in this zone. Per the municipal code, setbacks are established through the development plan review process, which is subject to approval by the city council. However, in no case may the established setbacks be less than the setbacks required of the residential single-family zone. So, the proposed residence is setback 47 feet 8 inches from the rear property line, 27 feet 4 inches from the east side property line, 25 feet 2 inches from the west side property line, and 36 feet 4 inches from the front property line. The RS, the residential single-family zone, required setbacks are 20 feet for the rear, 10 feet for both sides, and 20 feet for the front. So, all setbacks of the project are greater than the minimums of the RS zone. Here you can see two renderings of the proposed project. On the left here is the front of the residence, which will be as viewed from Valdez Road, and on the right, we have from the rear of the residence as viewed from Olapanga Canyon Road. I do just want to mention here that the rendering doesn't include things like oak trees, which you could see in the prior image, will help to screen the majority of the house from view. You could see in that previous image that the story poles were not quite as visible from Olapanga Canyon Road due to the presence of the oak trees along the rear property line. So, this rendering is only the residence, it doesn't take the trees into account. A little bit of background on the previous review this project has gone through. The development plan review committee, I'm sorry, the development review committee reviewed the proposed project on May 21st, 2019. The architecture review panel reviewed the proposed project on August 23rd, 2019, and November 1st, 2019, and found that the proposed project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood, and recommended approval of the project. The planning commission reviewed the proposed project on May 1st, 2025, and May 15th, 2025, and adopted Planning Commission Resolution 2025-808, which recommended approval of the project to the city council. So, staff concludes that the proposed single-family residence is an allowed use in the open space zoning district. The proposed project conforms to the development standards within the OS zoning district, and compliance is documented within the written staff report. The ARP recommended approval of the project. The planning commission recommended approval of PC Resolution 2025-808, finding that the project is consistent with the findings for approval of a development plan review, a site plan review, a scenic corridor permit, and an oak tree permit. And lastly, the project is exempt from CEQA review pursuant to Section 15061, which is general rule exemption, and 15303, new construction of the CEQA guidelines. So, therefore, the recommended action, consistent with the planning commission's recommendation, is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2025-1967, approving file numbers DPR-2019-001, PL 1901492, PL 1901497, and PL 1901494. Thank you, and I am available for questions, and we do also have the owners, and I believe their architect here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Before I open the public hearing, do my council members, my fellow council members have any questions? Mayor Protim?
Yes, Jacqueline, you mentioned, excuse me, I'm a little congested with my allergies here. You mentioned that there was something else previously on the property, but you didn't say what it was, and I double-checked the report, I didn't see what it was.
So, I believe permits for the previous structures on the property were originally from around the 1940s. What was actually existing on the property did not match what was permitted on the property. My understanding is that what existed was some sort of single-family residence, accessory structure, garage combination, but those structures weren't permitted, which is part of the reason why the previous buildings on the property were demolished as part of a code enforcement case around, I think, 2014.
Is that, Tom, was that the property where it looked like a detached garage that was just standalone, and there was all this junk around it like a junkyard?
I believe you're right. I mean, I don't remember the name, but I didn't want to bring that up necessarily.
No, I don't want to mention the name.
This was, this was a long time enforcement case.
Yes, I, well, it's been there 30 years ago I'm talking about, so, okay. So, glad to see that it's finally being put to good use. When you said that, it struck a memory in that Valdez does not have a lot of houses on it, and I kind of figured it was that. Is this a double lot?
No, it's a single lot, it just happens to be an anomaly in the sense that at the end of Valdez there, you're now in the OS zoning district. Because it was a larger lot, that's why it's zoned OS to begin with, because it backs up to conservancy land to the north.
And it was, so, it was never a lot that was tied together? It was always just a single lot, because it's kind of a large, is your microphone on, by the way?
This is.
Okay, I just, I can hear, I can hear you, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry.
The audience isn't hearing, the television audience isn't hearing half my.
It's, if it was two lots before, we're not aware of that. But, I mean, we can always look it up, but it's definitely one lot now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, and thank you for that very thorough report, excellent written report and the visual report here tonight. I have no problem, as you discussed, with the size of the home being a little bit larger than the average, and the lot size being a big lot, but within the realm of acceptable according to everyone so far, so. My only questions are, do you know why there was a delay? If you know, if it was on our doing, our doing, or the owners' doing from November 2019 to getting the planning commission in 2025?
Yes, this project has been in process a long time, and I'm sure the property owners can speak to that as well. As far as I'm aware, I believe a large portion of that delay was due to the fact that the current regulations for a septic system in California are relatively stringent. A tier-one septic system is required, so they could probably speak to that better than me, but I know a large portion of that time was spent back and forth trying to make sure they were designing a septic system that was in accordance with the current codes.
And as, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, it required some modifications to where they were putting the dispersal fields in, then resulted in some changes to the oak tree port and some changes to the fire turnaround, so it was a lot of going back and forth to make sure everything met every code.
Got it, and on your, I was saying, on your map you showed, you pointed that out where the septic system would be in, also the turnaround in the same area of Valdez.
Right, and the septic system and the turnaround can't overlap each other, so it was a lot of making sure everything meets fire code and meets septic system requirements, and nothing is overlapping.
Great, thank you. Was there any opposition, or written opposition, that we haven't seen?
We have not received any public comments.
And, and was the planning commission vote unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Albrecht, any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a question, and with your last response, I hesitate to ask it, but my question was, does the septic dispersal field require a redundant area for a future dispersal field, and is that already included?
Yes, if I could just go back to the previous site plan slide. Can you see that? Set up on your screen. Okay. Here we go. These areas, these crosshatched areas are the future dispersal field areas, so you can see that they have planned for that, and it does not, and it cannot overlap with the fire turnaround.
Okay, and in terms of review for oak tree ordinance, compliance, and all that, and our historic roadway, because Olapanga Canyon Road is a historic roadway, we made sure that those are outside of those zones also?
Looks great, thank you. At this point, I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to make comment on this project, you'll need to fill out a speaker card in the back of the room and get that to our city clerk. At this point, I have two. We'll call the first one, which is Laura Hanson. You'll be given three minutes to, to speak.
I'm just here to answer any questions of the designer of this project, so if there's no questions, I'll just take your time.
No questions, thank you. The next card I have is Jose and Christine Ochoa.
Yeah, I hear the homeowners, same comment, that's our, we just hear questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no other comment cards, so with that, I can close the public hearing. Let's see here, seeing no additional speakers, we're closed. Does the city council have any comments? No, I will make one comment just because I, I think it's worthy to note, in a site like that, to encroach upon a few oak tree canopies and only remove one 2.2-inch diameter oak is a, an amazing feat, and you should be commended on your site plan, and I haven't seen anything like that in a long time, and I served a few years on the planning commission, seeing just the opposite, so, thank you for preserving our, our oak trees. If there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and just call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we're, I should take a motion first, shouldn't I?
Motion.
I got a, I got a motion by Councilmember Albrecht, a second by Councilmember Shapiro. We'll go do that vote one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And at this point, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go on, I can't. I forgot to take. Okay. Now, new business. Okay, we are now back in session. We have, the next item on our agenda is new business. We have our budget for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. The city manager Kendon Meek will present the report.
Mayor, if we could, could we do the landscape lighting assessment district item number?
Oh, I missed one. It was at the bottom of the last page, I'm sorry. Back to number fourteen, the landscape maintenance district number twenty-two and landscape lighting act districts numbers twenty-two, four, twenty-seven, and thirty-two, assessment proceedings for fiscal year 2025-2026. And presenting is Curtis Castle.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro temp and city council. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, it'll just be a short oral presentation. We ask that you open the public hearing tonight with respect to the increased levies and levy assessments in the lighting landscape act districts that you just stated. We also ask that tonight you continue the public hearing to our next meeting on June 25th, at which time we will receive ballots for the single zone that went out to a Prop 218 vote, which was Calabasas Park Estates, that's Zone Eight in LLAD twenty-two. We'll count those ballots at the next meeting, and hopefully they will pass, but we'll see, and they will have an increase in their assessment. All of the zones will be increased by a CPI this year of approximately 3.62 percent. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, and I will just state that even though there was no PowerPoint presentation, there was a staff report in our agenda. We'll start first with council questions. Seeing none?
Well, I guess it's a question. I mean, I received a phone call this afternoon from president of one of the HOAs up there in the affected area, because I believe Calabasas Park Estates is what you identify as the, as the one, as an increase needed.
They're going out for a, for an assessment on top of the CPI, yes.
Okay. And this individual stated that they had questions about that, and they wanted to talk about it, but, but there was no staff available to talk to her about it during the week. And I just wondered, what opportunities are there going to be? If we approve this tonight, what, what opportunities are there going to be to talk about it? And what, why? I mean, being the president of an HOA, staff normally deals with these people and contacts them directly. I would just wonder why that wasn't done here.
Well, so stat, so, community members can reach out to me, and my phone number is eight one eight two two four one six seven zero, or my email is available on the city website, and I will definitely take those calls or those emails. We're also just opening the hearing tonight, it will continue to June 25th, so those individuals can show up at the next meeting and provide public testimony.
Well, I guess if they had questions about the process, I mean, maybe I made an assumption that's not correct, because I don't know if it's automatic or not. Does, before this gets agendized, does staff meet with the affected HOAs, or do they, do they only just meet with them if there is a call and a question?
So, we don't go out and meet with the HOAs, but we do reach out to all the HOAs and ask through, usually through the, the boards of the HOAs, if they're interested in going out for a special assessment for a Prop 218 ballot. And so that information, we, we do rely on the, the HOA boards to kind of disperse that information. If we receive confirmation that, that the board would like an increase, we mail out the ballots, and at that point, everybody in the community would be informed that, you know, there's a vote happening. But it, that process starts in about February, so it is several months of a window there when the HOA board should be communicating to the community members that they're considering a special assessment.
Mayor Pro Temp, if I could add to that just a little bit, maybe, I think what we might be missing is the, the individual that you spoke with, are they, they focused on the, the CPI increase, or are they focused on the Prop 218 increase?
Problem is, I didn't get a chance to return, because I just got it this afternoon. I didn't get a chance to return this call.
So, yeah, just to clarify, so the, and I think this is where Curtis was going, so with the CPI index, or this, the increase based on CPI, that is done every year, and that's just baked into the, the engineer's report that goes out, and, and then that keeps those revenues coming in based on the inflationary rate. If it's, if it has to do with the Prop 218, that's really driven by the HOA or that district. They come to ask and work with staff to ask for that assessment to be increased. So, again, if it, if it has to do with the Prop 218, that's really driven by the HOA and the board requesting that that come forward, so they can increase assessments.
So, I'm, so if somebody has input between now and the next meeting, where the ballots are going to be counted, what, what impact would their input have if it's already gone out to a ballot? I mean, would, would we have discretion, or what is the, I mean, what happens from there? I mean, I don't know, I'm a little handicapped, because this person left the message, and I got it this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to even return it. So I really don't know what their concern is, but are we, if we approve this tonight, are we missing an opportunity for that person to have input, or can they?
Eddie, go ahead.
They can still, again, they can still provide comment at the next public hearing, and from now till the next, till we close the public hearing, I'm sorry, we're continuing the public hearing, until June 25th, their public testimony would be heard, but the increase is based on the results of the balloting. And so if the majority approved the increase, then it will pass.
And the CPI?
The CPI is passed when council approves the final engineer's, engineer's report that will be presented on June 25th as well.
Okay, so, so there is still opportunity. Okay. That, that's what my concern was. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with no other council questions, then we're going to open the public hearing. Staff has recommended continuing the public hearing until June 25th. That's a recommendation that's before us, that we'll be voting on here. But at this time, I will open the public hearing. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, you may do so now by filling out a speaker card and giving it to our city clerk. Madam clerk, do we have any speaker cards? We have none. Seeing no additional speaker cards, do I close the hearing?
No, we just, we'd vote to continue it.
The vote would be to continue, so I think we should entertain a motion first, then.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by council member Weintraub, seconded by council member Shapiro, and to clarify, that was moving to keep the public hearing open and continue it to June 25th.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We'll take this up in two weeks. Okay, now, new business. Item number fifteen, the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget presented by city manager Kendon Meek.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. We hope to go through this presentation fairly quickly and summarize some of the, the steps that have taken to get to this point, but then also the recommendations by the budget committee to the council this evening. We'll focus again on the operational budget, capital projects, and then our long-term budget forecast in this discussion. This slide that you have before you is something you've seen before, again, it's a summary of our revenues. These are, I want to emphasize that the first few slides that you'll see are the numbers from our budget, our draft budget that you saw on May 28th. So what, those have changed based on some of the other recommendations, but we started it out with about thirty million in revenues, and about thirty-two million in expenses, and there's a summary of those costs there. I want to, again, touch on just a couple of these, just as some questions have come up. First, I want to spend a little bit of time on this chart. We looked at this last meeting, and there were some wonderful questions that came out on May 28th, but then also, again, in our budget, standing budget meeting, standing budget committee meeting on May 29th. So these numbers that you see here are, include full-time and part-time staff, so any personnel that is paid for by the general fund. There's been some recommendations to break that out, and we can, we can do that, and I think at our budget committee, we provided the, the graph of that, but it's minimal on that, but again, I just wanted to be clear that these are inclusive of all of those costs, personnel costs for the general fund. The line that you see there is the employee count. This is the full-time employee count, it's not the personnel, or the part-time personnel. Now, one of the things too, just to, to clarify is, and I spoke with Ron a little bit more about this today, what you have in, with this line is a decrease in the total number of employees over time, but these represent budgeted employees, budgeted positions. So for example, if we have a position like we have, for example, in our public works that is budgeted but unfilled, we still count that in this number. So even though we might have, let's say, eighty budgeted employees, we might have only seventy-nine during that fiscal year, or seventy-eight, because of vacancies. Again, these are budgeted positions throughout that year. Second, one of the questions that came up was contractual services. As a result of the discussions at the budget standing committee, we're going to be working with some of our residents and, and some, and create a group that can answer, or delve into these a little bit more to ask some questions. We felt it was appropriate to do so. One of the questions that has come up is, if we look at this slide again, go back to the personnel, how much contractual work is offsetting staff work? We're going to delve into that a little bit more, but I think the main, you can see this in part here, just for the current fiscal year, so if you look at Robert Half Incorporated, that's temporary staffing of one hundred and forty thousand. So that is money that is spent to bring in temporary staffing. Now, that is paid for, though, by the savings of those individuals. So for example, over the course of the last year, we've used Robert Half for our receptionist, for an accounting technician, and so these were vacancies, and as we brought in these temporary employees, they filled those vacancies, so there was a, a savings from the full-time employee that paid the Robert Half contract, and then, and, and three of the cases, I think this year, we've hired the Robert Half temporary employee into that full-time position. So we'll go back again and look through the rest of those. You can see that what we included here in this other category at the bottom, that one point two million, that's any contractual service that is under eighty-two thousand, and that includes everything from repairs, plumbing, signage, legal, legal counsel, whatever that might be, outside of the city attorney's contract, and so these are, again, would be anything under eighty-two thousand grouped into that one point two million. Here you can see visually what the, those contractual services looks like. So of the amount that we've spent, again, this is July through April of the current fiscal year, fifty percent of our contractual services are with three vendors, M6 Consulting, and as the mayor pointed out, that is paid for by our building fees. So as building fees come in, they'll go back out to pay M6 Consulting, and as the mayor pointed out, also in our budget standing committee, we cannot charge more for these building permit fees than, than we spend. It has to be in and out on that ratio. The next is Newberry Park Tree Service, which is landscaping. This is general fund landscaping would be our parks, our recreational areas, medians, things like that, anything general fund. And then third is Burnes Pacific Construction, and this is usually associated with storm cleanup. One thing I forgot to mention in our last meeting is with Burnes Pacific, if this is a, an event that is catastrophic in the sense where we've declared as an emergency as a, as a council, we can get reimbursement through, for those funds, for those expenses through CAL OES. We have three current requests with CAL, CAL OES right now to bring in some of these funds, that would go back, not just these, for the current fiscal, but in previous years, pay for Burnes Pacific and other vendors who've helped with storm cleanup. In our general fund, we wanted to highlight the differences between this fiscal year and previous fiscal years, and you have that summary there, of about two point one million in new expenses or increased costs. And so, as, what we were dealing with, with the first draft of the budget, was a deficit of about two million, two point one million, based on the thirty million in revenues, thirty-two million in expenses, with that deficit of about two point one million. Going into the discussion last meeting, and then with the budget subcommittee, the, the budget committee recommended that we take three initiatives, cost allocation, reduction in expenses, and then as a last effort to close the gap, use general fund reserves. So, based on the council's direction, we've presented a cost allocation plan. This slide here that you're looking at is personnel costs, that would be allocated out to the different funds. You see there that, that's about a savings of about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand to the general fund, as that, those costs are distributed to the other funds. And then on the second slide, you have legal cost, insurance, and landscaping allocation. That nets a savings of, to the general fund of about nine hundred and forty-four thousand, and again, those are distributed out to the other funds. We have had some questions that have come in on this, and I know Curtis is, has been working with different members of CPA and others regarding these questions. I'd like to address some of those right now, so the question had come up with the general landscaping, as to why this is going to the ad valorem. So these are general landscaping costs that are done within the district. So these are usually areas or streets that are outside of what we call the common benefit area zones, so these zones each have their own assessment, and these are public areas outside of these CBAs, common benefit areas. And so these would be medians, right-ofways, tree trimming, some mowing, sprinklers, and things like that, that is paid for, for general fund dollars attributed, or that is within the district. Now, one of the questions has come up of, why aren't we then attributing that, or allocating that out to these other LLAD funds, plus, or the other cost centers? A couple with that, one is the nexus is, it has to have a direct nexus to it, and so with the library, tennis and swim, community center, there isn't a direct nexus for these general landscaping costs. Moreover, tennis and swim and the community center already pay for their landscaping costs, so this is nothing outside of their properties, this is, again, roads, streets, medians, right-ofways, where there's tree trimming and other landscaping. The other question was, why isn't it allocated out to the LLADs? Again, that goes back to the nexus. Most of the, these are outside of the boundaries of the LLADs, and so they're not within the district boundaries of that. Again, it's public right-ofway or public area. Now, some of these could be allocated out, it, it would be a possibility to do that. However, that would put more of a burden on the property owners, because over time, that would, in essence, stress or create a bigger burden on the budgets of the LLADs. Again, we'll, we'll pause after the end and take a few more questions on that, but I wanted to clarify that going into the conversation. So again, with the cost allocation plan, we're looking at about one point six million dollars in savings to the general fund. Next, I want to spend some time looking at discretionary operational expenses. After our meeting on the 28th, we sat down as a team, and we looked at our notes and reviewed the direction provided by each of the council members, and what we tried to then do is take a, a general consensus, or a general feel for where the council members were on each of the ones where they're, they, the council members did not want to reduce a, a, a cost, or if they were comfortable reducing it somewhat. And so we presented this to the budget subcommittee, and initially came up with three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in savings. Now, one of these, I just want to point out, with the pumpkin festival, we're looking at a forty thousand dollars net change in that. What the budget committee is recommending is not that we reduce or change the scope of the pumpkin festival, festival, but instead increase the cost of the ticket, so it would generate new, more revenues than offset total cost of there. Finally, the last item, after our budget meeting, staff identified just over sixty thousand in other contracts and programs and other things that we were able to cut. I want to compliment our staff for doing that. One was a, a contract that was going to expire, or is expiring, in July, and so the decision made, was made not to renew that. And then our city clerk looked at a, a contract that she had in, in previous city, and realized that could be renegotiated for a significant savings for even actually better services, and so several, those were the two big ones, but there were several in that process. And so again, I want to compliment staff on that, in bringing that additional sixty-seven, or sixty thousand in, bringing it to three hundred and seventy-five thousand in, in operational savings. So this is where we're at today, council, if, from where we started with a two point one million dollar deficit, with the cost allocation, we can unburden the general fund with, in the tune of about one point six million, with the reduced operational expenses, another three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which leaves us just south of one hundred thousand dollar deficit for the upcoming fiscal year. That's a big undertaking, and I, again, as I've mentioned to you in, in correspondence, I know these are difficult decisions to wrestle with some of these things, both with the cost allocation and the reduction in operational expenses, but it allows us then to minimize the impact on the general fund reserves. And mayor, I think with your permission, I'll just go forward with the capital projects and others, and then we can go back and do the whole thing. the whole thing. Question would then be about our general fund reserves. So if we're requesting about 98,000 or 100,000 in reserves, where are we at on our reserves? So we have about 3.8 million in reserves. That number's changed from last time. And again, if you have to, if you remember, our 50% reserve policy is based on expenses. So when we allocate funds out, we have less expenses in the general fund, so it actually increases our reserves. It's proportional that way. One thing I do want to point out in the asterisks down below is I made a mistake last time. These monies do not include the monies held in trust with the par of section 115. So there's an additional funds there that are set aside. I had listed that it was combined. So that's 3.8 million available. Regardless of that, the budget committee asked us to prioritize project, postpone where we can, spend some time pursuing grants and other allocations, and then only tap into general fund reserves if that was necessary to do for capital projects. Based on that, we reduced our planned projects drastically from a list of about, I think initially, I think we started about seven and a half, eight million dollars in projects, down to one project right now, which is the AV equipment at Founder's Hall. That's a $250,000 project with it being shared between the general fund and the library. Now, with that, there are significant, there is a significant need for HVAC repairs and upgrades and replacements throughout the city. That comes in at about 2.7 million dollars. However, based on the recommendations of the budget committee, we are not going to look at HVAC replacement until we finish up the solar and energy retrofit proposal that will be going out in the next few weeks. That will give us an idea of how these ANESCOs, they're called, can include that in the project with a solar, with the the cost of, or the savings of that project paying back the, the cost of the HVAC replacements. If we're able to do that, that allows us to use some of this 1.8 or general fund reserves if necessary, to put towards capital projects. So council member Weintraub, I know you mentioned, for example, at our last meeting, the concern with the electrical panel. That would be something that would be put into the solar and energy retrofit project. If it can't wait, we would still have the flexibility to come back and do it this year. Same with the pool main line. We'd be able to come back and put it in this fiscal year. The budget committee also recommends using, now that we've freed up some of the general fund reserves, to move 500,000 to our section 115 trust. This is, this is good governance, but it also is protecting those funds. It's taking it from our general fund reserves and putting it in another reserves that are just tighter and more controlled for specific use with pension and other post-employment benefits. To finish up, council, I'd like to look at our financial forecast. So when we started with the budget discussions, this is what we were looking at as a forecast, where the, the delta, that distance between our revenues and our expenses was going to be significant of about 2.1 million dollars this year, and then growing over the next few years up into that 10-year mark. What that does is that would burn through not only our existing 3.8 million immediately, but then we would be dipping into the 50% reserves to just operate as we are operating right now. Because of what the council is, might take action on tonight, that changes. So it narrows that gap a little bit. Now, it doesn't mean we're out of the clear. We still need to look at future revenues and, and come back. And that is especially poignant if you look at our capital replacement plan, where we need about 2.8 million. So really, even, even though we've narrowed that, that gap between the blue line and the orange line with our revenues and expenses operationally, once you add that capital expense in there of what we should be putting away every year, once again, we see that delta, that difference between what we have and what we need. And then, again, good stewardship of our funds. If we were putting away monies towards our trust, again, that increases that to the black line, again, opens that delta up a little bit more. So with that, what we would like to do, council, in regards to this, is come back in August and spend either a special meeting or a significant portion of an entire meeting, looking at new revenue options. And in that meeting, we would talk about everything that has been discussed. And that could be a transient occupancy tax or a TOT on hotels. It could be a sales tax. It could be a business tax or a business license. It could be a community facility district. It could be a property tax. And we'll talk about the pros and cons of each, and then look for direction from the council on what we can do to get ourselves in a way where our revenues are exceeding our expenses and preparing for that rainy day of these capital projects that are coming. So for tonight, we're looking for direction on the budget. If there's any things that you'd like to change, and then, once the council is ready, we are requesting adoption of the resolution, which would improve, approve the cost allocation plan, authorize use of general fund reserves, and then direct staff to return with the comprehensive report on new revenue options. And with that, council, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Ron and I can address those questions from, from each of you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. We'll start with some council member questions. I'd like to start with our budget committee, council member Albrecht.
Thank you. I've had a number of questions over the past couple of months with the budget committee. For the public's information, I've mentioned this before, business runs so much different than a public entity, particularly learning about the cost application aspect. So I think most of my questions have been answered. We've done a great job. Certainly want to thank Ron and your staff doing an empirical job of providing the data, because without the data, we couldn't really make decisions. And some of them are very, very tough. We've enjoyed a city that's been sailing along, and we're hitting some white caps, and we're going to hit more in the future. So we have a lot of heavy decisions to make. And I know our council is up to it. Budget committee's tuned in on it, and we appreciate your help, because all hands are on deck with this. So those are my comments, and no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Weintraub?
Comments and questions, I guess?
Okay. I don't know, did you want to go as budget committee, or?
Well, I'm the other budget committee.
No, I know, did you?
As a mayor, I should go last.
Okay. I didn't know if you had anything to add. I realize, I spoke to Kendon today and asked a bunch of questions, but I realized I did forget one. And it was about security for City Hall.
Yes. So here, what we've proposed is a savings of about $70,000 in security at city facilities. So our current contract with the provider starts at 7:00 in the morning and then goes till 11:00 at night. Most of our incidents are happening later morning, early afternoon, evenings. And so we felt that there is a safety or a comfort in reducing those hours, probably four or five hours in the morning, anywhere from, eliminating those hours from 7:00 to 11:00 or 7:00 to noon, which would then free up that 70,000.
And I respectfully disagree, because we get reports all the time of incidents happening overnight, late, early in the morning, and especially with summer. I'm just, I'm afraid not to have the security here in the more, like, early morning hours when people arrive to work.
You don't have to convince us, you have to convince the other four.
I'm very worried about reducing, just this week, like, I just, picture after picture from people, you know, most of the time I pass it on, but if it's just an incident that's already like come and gone. But I'm worried about our employees coming to City Hall without any security. So, but I guess I would look to Michael.
Yeah, an additional, thank you, council member Weintraub. One additional consideration is that the library doesn't open until 11:00. And so that is when we get the most amount of people coming, right, right in those, those hours. And so we figured that if we can have our security guard on site for that opening, when transients or some of those, those higher priority phone calls come in, we could kill two birds with one stone. So that was another consideration of a later start date.
I don't know. I, that was the one, and I meant to ask you about it earlier. I just have a lot of reservations.
Well, do you have, do you have a, I mean?
Yeah, I went and cut.
An alternative?
I mean, I think it's important that we have a strong security presence here, first thing in the morning when City Hall opens. So that's my issue on that one. The other cuts I was fine with. I spoke to Kendon about, I know some of the HOAs are still having conversations with Curtis regarding the cost allocation with the, with the LMDs. So I just wanted to make sure that if things come up, that we understand that something might come back to us, and that changes might have to be made based on findings during these conversations with the HOAs and our staff. So that was the other one. And the other thing, I still really want to prioritize the 2.8 million capital replacement plan and focus on our deferred maintenance. So coming back with a plan on how we can increase our revenue is really important to me, because I think we really have to focus on those things.
Thank you, council member. And if I could add something that I forgot to mention when I was on this slide, actually, it's this next one. In regards to the general landscape that is right now slated to hit the ad valorem, one of the things that Curtis and I talked about, and, and I don't think we had a chance, Ron, to talk with you, but one of the things that we talked about this afternoon is, this would be set up so it's not an immediate transfer. And so we wouldn't immediately transfer ad valorem funds to the general fund. We could do this in a way that it's charged monthly or whatever that is. So for example, if the budgeting number that we have here is what Curtis anticipates will be spent in the year, if tree trimming and other issues aren't as significant, that number could be, you know, quite a bit less. And so we wouldn't charge that full amount to the, to the ad valorem. So it would really be based on a need, a monthly need or a quarterly need of what is actually being used.
So those are my questions, but my one sticking point is not have, is cutting security at City Hall.
And if I could, council member Weintraub, and for my fellow council members, what I'd suggest is, what's proposed from the budget committee in front of you is a, a cost allocation plan that, that moves about 1.6 million from the general fund to other funds to pay for that, you know, 1.6 million, then a proposal that indicates about $375,000 worth of cuts, and then finally about $100,000 taken out of our available reserves to close the gap. So if you would like to keep the security for city facilities and wanted to suggest that to us, my, my recommendation to all of you is to tell us where you want to come up with that. Do you want to take more money out of the general fund reserves? Do you think we should allocate more to another fund? Is there something else you'd like to cut instead? So as you, as you suggest these things, I'd just ask that, give us ideas of where we would make up that difference.
And council member, while you're looking at that page, another thing I do want to mention, mention to council, is that Steph is currently looking at a circ, a security camera project. We haven't brought this to council yet. We're in the preliminary stages of this, of looking at updating our, our cameras here at City Hall and throughout our city facilities, but also including a network of better traffic cameras and so forth. I think having those cameras will address some of the concerns that you're mentioning.
Right. And I brought that up at the last meeting, but until we have those cameras, I would not recommend, I mean, I brought up, like, at our last meeting, looking at sponsorships possibly for concerts in the parks, sponsorships, sponsorships for some of our other events. Looking, I mean, I'm not looking at more ways to bring in the revenue, but I don't have an exact place to cut or move funds around, but I really think that we should not be taking away any security here, especially as we enter summer months. But if you give me time, I'll find 70,000 as we're sitting here.
Okay, should we go to council member?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Buzagian?
Well, I have a couple comments on the security issue. What about, I mean, the security guard, as you explained, goes, does a tour of all the city facilities. Why isn't there a cost sharing? Like, if they're going to the library, it comes out of the library fund, some portion. If they're going to the tennis and swim center, it goes to the tennis and swim center fund. I mean, isn't that what we were talking about before? And why doesn't it apply here?
Thank you, council member Buzagian. Great question. We have not allocated out the, the costs for the different facilities for the security, so we, we could figure that.
Well, let me, let me make it easy where I'm going with this. I mean, if we're really going to try to squeeze out some extra money, I'm not saying, obviously, the library's not going to pay 100%, but maybe the library pays 10%, because there's 10 facilities and it's stopping 1/10 of the time there. The tennis and swim center pays 10%. So you're, you're starting to get at least a little bit less of a deficit from the general fund. I mean, isn't that what you were talking about with the city sharing on, I mean, with Founder's Hall, when we were talking about redoing some of the, the acoustics in there, I mean, you took some money out of the library fund because they're benefiting too. So was there, I mean, did you, did we not think of this, or is it just?
No.
What is the reason?
We hadn't thought about it. And so it's actually something that we could cost allocate this out. Now, again, just as we've mentioned before, anytime you add, you know, these costs to the tennis and swim, the library, community center, you're now squeezing their budgets.
Well, we're, that's what we're starting to do.
So what we're saying is, I think it's a better way of saying it is, let's subsidize these funds by costs. I mean, we're going to have to pick it up either through their capital projects or whatever, through the general fund, but we can do that now. So I think it's a great.
It's an idea. It's an idea to help. I thought of those two, at the moment, I can't think of anything else that would be separately funded unless you can think of something. So that's one. A better way of doing this might be to have, to, to cut the funds, sorry, Alicia, and then come back in, you know, three to six months and see, were there any incidents? Was there a problem at all? And then I could better judge whether the money is being well-spent. If we cut the security and then all of a sudden, you know, or maybe even sooner, because it's summer's coming up, if you're telling me that, you know, students are now hanging around the civic center and we have no security there at certain times, then I might say, okay, well, let's put the funds back. I just, I hate to have the security there if really there's no need for it. But I do think there is a need for security at certain hours. So those are my two thoughts on that issue. The only other one I had to comment on, a couple, the donation to PFCs, I anticipate this is not going to go over well. It's not going to be popular, but they should understand that we are needing to tighten our budgets. And it's, we're not singling them out, so I hope that's conveyed to them. And then I was, you know, I guess on the discretionary funds, I was okay with the, the cut. I just would say that as long as, you know, when we're talking about representing the city at specific events, that's not taken out. And I'm, and I'm okay with the, with us tightening our belts like everybody else. Otherwise, I think actually you did a very good job in averaging our, our comments. That's it.
Council member Shapiro.
First, I'll thank the budget committee, Mayor Kraut, and council member Albrecht, and of course, our CFO and city manager for their hard work. I know what it's like to work on this. And again, coming back with this is good. I have a lot of questions or comments, which I will try and get through pretty quickly. First one is on page eight of the report, and I think I asked this last time, if I recall. The compensation study that is listed for 150,000, that has not been done, is not contracted yet. Am I correct?
Correct. We have not, we will, we will need to go out for a request for a proposal or actually solicit proposals from companies. And then we will return to council, and council will approve that contract, because it's going to be above 100, it's going to be above the 60,000 threshold.
Okay. I guess my question was, is that, is that something, obviously, this is for the city manager, that you feel is necessary and needed at this time, especially with this budget we're talking about?
We do, yeah. This is something that we've never done as a city. We need to create that baseline. It's, it's time to do that.
Okay, because I know we've had hard work done by assistant city manager, Michael McComville, who provided information, but that was not an official outside compensation study.
Correct. So what you were saying? So what you received from Michael a couple of years ago was a salary comparison or a salary survey. It was not a full in-depth class and compensation study.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, obviously, what we're cutting, we're cutting, as, as was mentioned, things down to as low as $5,000 on the recommendation, so that's, that's a substantial item. Then I'll look at page six also, and you talked about this, which I, I understood and appreciate, the other general fund contract services, less than 82,000 each, which total 1.238 million approximately. Going forward in the next steps, whether it's August or whatever the Budget Committee and, and CFO and City Manager are doing, can we look closer at those, those particular general fund contracts? Even though they're less than 82,000, I think the total number of 1.238 million deserves a, a closer look so we can see if there's anything there we can cut, just like you found, I believe, another 60,000 before this meeting. So that would be a recommendation. My comments on the general fund reserves are consistent with what I have said and said last meeting. We used to be above 75%, then we were above 65%. Now maybe we're at 55% and we have a, at least the council has taken a position and determined that 50% is the base, the minimum, we should not go below as far as our general fund reserves. And to me, the general fund reserves are emergency funds to be used in case of a unique or rare or unusual circumstance. We've had economic strife, we've had fires, we've had pandemic. Those are very, very unique situations. And part of the reason of having the general fund reserves, which I've always learned and I'll, I'll say again, is having high general fund reserves also helps keep our city credit ratings high for our city. So when we go, if we need to issue bonds or, or whatever we might do that would require a higher rating, it gives us better rates, it gives us, it makes us money in those situations, potentially as opposed to lowering those general fund reserves. So I will say, I understand the usage potential that's raised here for the 98, approximately $100,000, but I would not want us to see depleting, to go down further to that 50%, which gives us, in my view, at least up here voting, no wiggle room at all to go below those numbers. I know I've heard tonight that that's a possibility going forward. I would rather see us come up with some other solutions than that unless it's a very unique or emergency situation. Looking forward at the future, we know there are issues and you've shown them to us, so we need to plan better as a council, as a city, so that we don't dip into general fund reserves any further. That's just my comment. Looking at the budget, also the, one of the contract individuals or businesses, and I'm not picking on them, but Unix LLC Signal Maintenance, and I know you talked about something with signal maintenance also. In the city, there's been a lot of times in the past year, year and a half, that I've received quite a bit of notices, emails, texts, calls about lights being out, traffic signals being out, just out, not flashing lights, not anything, and causing some potential danger for residents here. And whether the sheriffs go out and deploy or we, we have our contractors going out to make sure people are safe, or we're just hoping people are going to obey the law, which is you go, then I go. That's only 82,500, but there's an example, if there have been issues that I've heard of, I'm assuming you've heard of, and Curtis has probably heard of a lot more than I have. So I'd like to look at that, or like you all to look at it since I'm up here. And then looking at the items, the list of items, concerts in the park. I understand the last concert, which I was not there, was a big turnout, was a great turnout, and we're looking at cutting one of those concerts. I understand it, I would, if it's appropriate, I'd like to look at what Alicia had mentioned last time and this time, possible sponsorship to bring another concert back so that we don't lose it, but we, or, or have a sponsorship for two concerts, maybe reduce that cost even more to the city, if that's appropriate. Just a thought. Again, I feel like we need, we're balancing the budget, but I want to make sure we continue to provide services such as we celebrated tonight as the great Park and Recreation Community Services Department we have for the city. I don't want to cut those benefits or, or improvements or, or safety for the city. Pumpkin Festival, I, I think it makes sense. I listened to those colleagues of mine talking about raising the price to make it more affordable, and if that's the solution, that makes good sense. The council reduction of $5,000 is, I don't think that's going to make a big difference in the budget, but if that is what is recommended, I think we're all agreeing on that, although again, when it comes to events representing, we can, I guess, discuss that or go through the City Manager or CFO on that. The PFC, I have probably a little more of an issue with than some, although I did read the documents presented and based on the documents from a number of the PFCs, I would support the Budget Committee and the recommendation of reducing some because those, those funds were specifically intended not for the purpose which we received at least information from at least a few of the schools. I, I don't know what the plan is though, if there is one, on how the disbursements will take place to each of the schools out of these funds. Was there any discussion on that?
Great que, great question. So the, the PFCs received this week the checks from the current fiscal year. So those funds are the full amount budgeted for this fiscal year, which will then, or could be used for next calendar year or school year. So the checks that they would receive again a year from now, spring, early summer of 2026, would be half the amount of what they traditionally receive.
Per school, each school would be.
Yeah. Unless the council directs otherwise, but what we were doing is a 50% reduction across the board for each of the schools.
And, and the only, again, I haven't looked at the, their accounts. I'm, I've looked at a couple of them, I looked at the notes provided, and some of the expenditures did not meet with councils, at least what I understood to be our recommendations in the past. But the, the basic reason we're doing it is because of the budget situation and the financial situation going forward, at least for this time. We can always revisit it at a later date if we feel it necessary, I assume.
Can I just add to, the one positive is the crossing guards, no cut to that. And what was the other one? And the J team relating to the schools, so.
Again, I, yeah, I have comments on that. Again, it's very important.
Right.
And absolutely, but I, I'd like to see that be more of a shared expense, absolutely, going forward. I'd love to discuss that with our fantastic school system going forward. That's just a comment. Okay, and the only other comment I'll make is, which I did say last time, first, before that, I will say I'd like to see you look into, I do not want to cut, cut public safety in any way, but I did see the City Manager's recommendation and discussion briefly about the partial motorcycle officer. So I'd like to see it looked into a little more and maybe explained a little more to us as to what that would entail and what the reason is, if it's just an officer who writes tickets as opposed to doing something else, if we're potentially losing any service. I'd, I'd like to at least look at that because that's not a small amount either.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I, I think that was an idea that came up after the meeting, and so initially when we spoke on May 28th, I think there was rightfully so some concern from the council about reducing patrol hours or patrol minutes as listed on this sheet. However, we did not look at the motor deputy until after that meeting. If, if there's interest from the council, I can come back on the 28th, I'm sorry, on the 25th, our next meeting, and present some information about the motor deputy and those costs and if there's any interest in, in considering a, a reduction in motor deputy services.
Okay, and thank you, this is for going forward because I talked about the general fund reserves and the concern for the future. The same issue would be with regard to looking forward for the city, since 2022 to 2025, our general fund personnel, and we have great staff, but the costs have gone from 8.4 million to about 11.2 million in that timeframe. And they're just going to presumably keep going up as steps go up, as COLA, as rates go up. And the same with the sheriff's contract, which keeps going up. I'd like to see what you could do, what you could recommend, look at going forward, what we might do to not, to, to do even small reductions of costs or expenses in the two largest areas, when we're looking at reducing a concert or council discretionary funds, which don't total that much. These are the two largest expenditures. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Thank you all. I'll, I'll share some at this point. First of all, I want to say that, thank you to our City Manager for his presentation. Thank you to Ron Allers for all that you've done putting the budget together, but most of all, thank you to Allison Chen, who did all of the hard work and is just hiding out in the audience out there. Also, want a big shout out to our city clerk, Kristy Bucksempa. If you, Councilmembers, wonder how we knew what you guys said, you can see that we have pages and pages of Kristy's notes of what you all said, and that's how the Budget Committee was able to compile all of these recommendations. We didn't even know she was taking them until we asked for an audio recording. So if you're, if you're wondering how we captured all of it, it was our city clerk. Thank you very much for that. Want to ask a couple of questions and make a few comments. First of all, for clarity, the, we talked about this at the Budget Committee, but I think it's worthy of the microphone now. The allocation plan is something that we had studied and we're approved, for lack of a better word, to do a cost allocation plan for the numbers that are in front of us. These, these numbers are justified based on an earlier study?
That is correct. When we did our study in August of 2021, we presented a cost allocation plan that was about 2.6 million. So today, that, it would be greater than 2.6. I won't offer another number, but greater than 2.6. We're now proposing a 1.6 cost allocation plan.
And when we did our study for the 2.6 million, was there a recommendation in 2021 that we allocate some cost to the LMDs and to the ad valorem?
There was, and the city council at that time voted not to, or directed not to allocate cost to LMD 22 nor the lighting and landscaping districts.
Okay, and, and I think we decided to do that because this cost allocation plan was a, a new concept to us and we wanted to kind of get our feet wet with our City Hall services before we started, you know, really digging deeper into that. Was that about your recollection?
Yes, that is correct.
And the reason I mention that is because we have three ways of balancing the budget here before us tonight. One is the cost allocation plan, and in order to, you know, have each of the funds pay for the services that they're using, whether that's legal services or landscape services or, or what have you, that allows the general fund to, to not be supplementing these specific areas of our city. But I just want to make sure that because we're so far under the 2021 study, that, that we're comfortable with all of these numbers?
Yes, we are very comfortable.
And then in the future, do we anticipate using the cost allocation plan even more? I mean, is this something that five years down the road, we might want to allocate out more to the other funds? Is it possible?
Yes, it's possible. Yes, it's highly probable, and we would probably go out to an outside firm like we did in 2021 and do an official cost allocation plan that would meet the requirements, the Federal Office of Management and Budget, so then we can even burden grants and different things with an administrative fee that meets their, you know, the federal guidelines.
Okay, so that would take a little bit more effort, but it's something we can look into in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I could interrupt while you're looking, or before your next question, I love that, that thought because actually really that's a policy question that we'd have to wrestle with. So as, as the policymakers, you could direct staff to, to, for example, that the cost allocation plan increases with CPI every year. That could be a policy direction. Or the, the council could say, keep it at a flat rate at 1.6 million dollars for the next year, two, three years, until we do a cost allocation study. But again, great question because it's a, it's one that we'd have to wrestle with on the policy matters.
Okay. And then just to share with my fellow councilmembers, at the Budget Committee, we were given all of the other outside consultants. There's pages of them. The smallest one received $38.39. So you can see why we didn't present them all to you this evening. We stuck with the, the ones that might have an effect on the, the, the general fund here today, but the City Manager and I have already spoke about these, and we will be convening the Budget Committee in the coming months in preparation for future budgets, and also because there might be contractual services, we could cut mid-year. So we're setting a budget today, but we're not stopping the, the effort to clean up any way that we can find some cost savings here.
Great.
Just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we get a copy of that as well?
No, it's top secret.
Not super secret, okay.
Yes, we can.
We'll get that email to you.
All of that information is within your budget and the summary document that I have in front of me, I'll make sure the City Manager shares that with council. So I will point out that right now we are 63% of our general fund expenses in reserves, and we're going to take a, we're proposing to take $100,000 out of there, which would still leave us at 63%. It's not a significant amount of money compared to the 3.8 million that's in there. Just to sum up what I heard tonight, and in hopes of entertaining emotion here, I, I heard that security for facility services was desired to be kept, although that was not a three out of five at our last meeting. I'm hearing it tonight. One of the ways that Mayor Protam Bazzagian brought up is that we could take that $70,000 cut and perhaps allocate it in our cost allocation plan to a few of the city services. That coupled with, you know, some cuts, might get us there. We could take the difference again out of the general fund reserve instead of taking 100,000, take 170,000 out of the general fund reserve. We could do a combination of both. But if, if, if that's what the council desires, is to keep that security at the 195,000 in the current budget and not take the $70,000 cut that was presented in the staff report, we'd be looking for direction from, from council on which way we would balance that budget.
I have, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Point of clarification. Michael, with the security at City Hall, what time do they start?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM till 11:00 PM?
Correct, 16 hours per day.
Unfortunately, it's like the state of, it's like sad times. I think it's important that we have security at our civic center, so I really, I like James's idea. I mean, that was the whole reason we developed this budget based on cost allocation, so I would support that.
It'd be about a 20% reduction in the loss because you're talking about tennis and swim center making, maybe taking 10% and the library taking 10%, right? I mean, I don't know, I, you have to count the city, I don't know, do, do they do the rounds, Kenan, at all the parks? Like, do they go to Highlands Park and all that? Freedom Park?
Yes, they occasionally do. Again, the, the more areas we like them to provide a presence or coverage are areas that typically have had some type of activity, so they will occasionally patrol every single city property, even the park outlets under the Agora Road Bridge they're looking at.
Okay, so I, I mean, I don't want to micromanage, and I'm sure you can figure out what percent would be reasonable for the library and what percent for the tennis and swim center, and if I'm missing another one, I can't think of one I would be missing. Is there another one covered by a separate fund?
Community center?
Not anymore.
Yep, sure is.
That's a separate fund still?
It is, yeah.
When is that?
Why is it a separate fund? Is that the question?
Isn't that dissipating?
No, so we set it up as a separate fund to be able to track capital expenses for the renovation and the grand opening, but also to track the first few years so we knew again, capital projects and operational costs. The goal is, again, if we look at this slide.
The goal is, again, if we look at this slide, and Eric and her team are doing an amazing job on that. So our goal is that each year we reduce that $655,000 subsidy to the community center, that transfer. And that's happening as we see those memberships come in. I think we're at 600-plus memberships right now, right? Almost 700 memberships just in a year.
All right. Well, staff can figure out how to allocate it. I really don't want to sit up here and do the percentages. It's too complicated. Because I, I don't know exactly how much time they spend at each facility and I don't know what a fair allocation would be. Obviously, patrolling the Highlands Park is not the same as patrolling the Tennis Center or City Hall or something like that.
I mean, what time, what time do most people get here in the morning?
7:30.
Seven's good.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Michael because he's apparently the one. What's your view, being all, with all due respect, of the security around the facilities? I mean, I know I've contacted you with individuals around the area and I couldn't find anyone or contact, and you were the point, point person who we, we would communicate with. Are you finding that they are doing a really good job? And I guess that's a terrible thing to ask on the air, sorry. Your view of them and, and the ability, the recommendation came to reduce the hours. So question would be why, I guess, for you?
Yeah, I, I think you never know how much the presence of someone really mitigates the impact of something we're trying to stop. So with one recommendation of maybe pulling back for just a quarter or six months, might, might be a good recommendation so that we can have a baseline about when we do drop the hours or we remove the hours or we add them, we can actually see what impact it's having. It's, it's quite difficult, just like a sheriff patrol, to determine how much of it proactively is getting ahead of activity that, again, is, we're trying to mitigate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albert, did you want to comment on the security?
I do. Michael, it's, it's hard to draw conclusions sometimes blind. So I don't really have a reading of what happened when, you know, what the hours are when most of these events happen. It seems to me that we're using the security for the parks, not just, I, I, my opinion was, my thought was it was originally for the civic campus, library. But if we had an, an understanding of when these events happen, I know they're, they're a deterrent if they're there. So if they're there, there wouldn't be an event. But if they're not there, there might be an event. But nonetheless, I'm trying to shave some time when they're not here, when they're not that valuable, when the vents are at the lowest, and then maybe offset some of their use at the parks when there's not necessary, because the parks may not be accessed by a lot of people early in the morning. So what's the most efficient way or effective way to?
I suppose I could say the most predictable issues that we have, you're correct, are at the civic center, typically at nighttime. And that is a result of some of the younger, out-of-school students, right, that typically make their way from the Commons, right, after a movie, after, after they're enjoying a dinner. And, and then naturally, the civic center is adjacent to the, right, the Commons, which, which inevitably leads to, again, undesirable activity. Which is why the initial contract, if, if the council remember, was first initiated was because of some disturbing activity that occurred behind the library, on top of the library roof and so on and so forth. So.
And Councilman, if I could add to that. So Michael led into where I was going to go with this is, you know, the, the original contract years ago started with just security at the civic center. And it was just in the evenings. About a year ago, is that right, we expanded it to the, from the 7:00 AM to the, I guess it was in November.
A, a year or two ago, yes.
So, so we expanded the hours. And part of the expansion of the hours was to have more of a presence here. But we also heard from some of our employees at other facilities. So employees who were leaving Deans at, at 6 o'clock at night when it was dark. Employees now leaving the community center at 8:00 or 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night when it was dark. Employees leaving the Tennis and Swim Center at 10:00 at, at night when it was dark. And so we felt it was important that the security was spread throughout all of the city facilities and that there was a presence, not just at the civic center. And so that, again, was the reason to have these, the, the, and then that cost went up in part because when you, when we're, with our previous contract, we had a stationary guard. So you can show up in your personal car, sit here all day, or, you know, in those four or five hour shift and not move. You're paying a little bit more now because you have a vehicle that now is mobile throughout the community and going to these different sites. And so it's, it's making that presence in each of our facilities. So all of our employees, all of our residents, all of our constituents, all of our customers at these centers feel safe as well.
It makes great sense. I mean, I'm all for that, that, having employees and having them feel safe and participants at those locations, that's very valuable. I'm just looking at that time period where at dawn, is that very important to have them? So we can be a more effective force at the most appropriate time.
And, and that's why we suggested shaving off some of those hours in the morning. That's.
Right. But I'd like to know what we're shaving. I mean, I don't have any, we're talking, but we're not reading facts like reports. What time somebody?
If I, if I can just jump in, we're, we're on a budget discussion and I appreciate all of the council's comments. What I'd like to do is, is suggest, we've got a $70,000 item that we're talking about. I've heard to look at the hours and cut back the hours, to not cut back as much as proposed, to look at the cost allocation plan. My recommendation would be that when we make a motion, that we ask staff, before they come back on June 25th, to allocate out what's appropriate, to cut back whatever hours make sense. And whatever the difference is, we'll make up in, in, you know, in revenue here. So we'll, we'll ask you to come back and revise this number, I think. Perhaps if you can allocate some, some of those costs out, but obviously I don't think we're going to be able to allocate out $70,000.
And so does the council want the budget to come back another time then? I guess is, we thought we, I mean, if we have enough direction, we can do that tonight so we don't have to come back.
Oh, that's right. We have.
This was just, the 25th was a safety net, just in case we needed to.
We, we can, we can do that on the fly right here?
Yes, you can do that on the fly right here.
Okay. Ron, can you give us a number? How much do you think is appropriate to allocate out shooting from the hip? Remember, if it's wrong, it's just a budget. We can fix it at the mid-year budget.
I would suggest, you know, if we're looking at the cost allocation on an employee basis, you're looking at it with a cost allocation. If you've got 78 full-time employees with the cost allocation being at 51.8 for the general fund and then the rest allocated elsewhere, that's about a 33% cost allocation to funds other than the general fund. And from 195,000, that equals about $64,000, $65,000.
But, but this is a little different.
But I don't know if that's the appropriate.
This is site-specific, though.
Right. But the, the employee cost allocation on that basis is mostly site-specific. You've got the most at Tennis and Swim and Community Center. And the other smaller parks are kind of interspersed. Certainly, I think the finance team can, can do that if that's your direction. We can make that cost allocation.
My guess is it would be about 20%.
Yeah. And I think, I think what the city attorney is mentioning is, just based on the recommendation that we have here, if you just adopt this and say not to exceed amounts, we can figure it out.
Fine.
If you give us flexibility on the general fund reserve.
If you say, hey, give us, you know, some flexibility on here, but.
Maybe if we ever have a budget, like mid-budget review or mid-year budget review, be helpful to see a log of activity. Like, if there's zero incidents between 7:00 AM and, and noon, then I'm a little more comfortable cutting some hours in the daylight hours. I just don't know. I mean, I, I would, would hope we, we could get some statistics, maybe?
That's fine. That's very easy. They, they send a daily report. So I can certainly culminate some of those stats.
Can we get a motion then? No. What we'd be looking for, for a motion, if, if council chooses, would be to adopt the resolution that's in front of you, approve the cost allocation plan, and approve the list of cuts to the budget that were outlined in the staff report. I guess those are already outlined in the budget now.
Correct.
Correct.
And the authorization of these general fund reserves up to $98,465. Correct?
Correct.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Albert. Any other comments?
Just a question. If we're going to keep the 70,000, do you need us to up the general fund reserves just by a little?
So I think the direction is, is to either allocate out the cost or to look at minimal hours. But I think we can do that within these parameters still, yeah.
And, and before we vote, then I'll throw two other things out there that I heard from each of you. One is we should look at our allocation of the schools. At this point, it's a 50% cut across the board to all of the schools. What I heard was an interest perhaps in funding the schools that are in need and not the ones that aren't in need, but I don't know if that's available. I'm just going to ask staff to take a look at that and consider that before we get to the checks. We've got 365 days before we've got to write the checks. The other thing that I heard tonight was that sponsorship for city events might actually offset some of the expenses. We don't have a policy on that. I'll point out that the concerts in the park that we have scheduled for this year are going on as planned, the four concerts that we have. So this cut would actually represent a cut to a concert next summer. And I would suggest that before next summer, either myself or somebody might bring forward a, a, a council item to discuss the council policy on city sponsorships. And that'll give staff the ability to move forward and perhaps still working within the same budget, put on the fourth concert. So we have avenues to solve all of that stuff. We have time to do that. And our work does not end tonight when we pass the budget. Any other comments on the budget before we call a vote?
Just thank you to the Budget Subcommittee. It's a lot of work and to staff, Ron, Kendon, everyone involved.
With no other comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we have one more item of business tonight. It is the City Councilmember's Salary Ordinance, item number 16. Deputy City Manager Michael McConville will present the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. So I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for this, just a brief oral presentation to accompany the staff report. So as a little bit of background, California Government Code, Section 36516, establishes formal procedures for reviewing council member salaries. What it does is it allows you to increase council member salaries up to 5% per year or up to 10% using the CPI per year. That, that being said, as a policy, the city council presents, excuse me, staff presents to the city council every two years, recommended salary revisions based on the CPI, which mirrors the increase provided to full-time staff members. And the introduction of ordinance number 2025-414 is revising those city council member salaries effective January 1, 2027. So quite, quite some time away. And for tonight's recommendation, staff is proposing to increase council member salaries by 6.1% total. And how do we get to that? In 2024, 3.1% CPI? And in 2025 up to now, present, it's 3% CPI. So for a total 6.1% increase, which again, mirrors what the full-time staffer are, or have and are currently receiving. So this would increase council member salaries by $76 per month, totaling $1,317 for each council member monthly salary. And again, lastly, this proposed salary increase would be effective January 1, 2027. And so staff's proposed recommendation from the council tonight is to simply introduce this ordinance, 2025-414, amending Chapter 2.04 of the Calabasas Municipal Code relating to city council member salaries. I am available for, for any questions and, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? More comments? Seeing none. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Weintraub, seconded by Councilmember Albert. I will introduce the ordinance by reading the title into the record and waiving the full reading of the text. The title, "An Ordinance of the City of Cal-" "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Calabasas Establishing Salaries for Members of the City Council." All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So we are now at verbal reports. Does the council have anything to report? I'll begin with Councilmember Weintraub.
Not at this time, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
As was mentioned or alluded to earlier, Mayor Kraut and I attended last week's League of California Cities, LA County Division Quarterly Dinner and Meeting. And that was at USC.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
Thank you. I've been doing double duty on the finance side this month. Queen Power Alliance also approved their budget. And as I mentioned in the past, rate setting has been determined. And we are strengthening our reserves and rate stability. And our parity with SCE remains very, very close. So with weather being, weather-related being very kind to us, I think we're going to see a rate drop a little bit. But we all know what happens with Mother Nature. So it's subject to, that's why we've increased our reserves to be on the safe side. So rates won't have to go up. So that's my report and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you. And I was supposed to attend a retreat with Councilmember Albert, the CPA, this Friday, but they canceled it due to the safety concerns of what's going on downtown. I have a Valley Economic Alliance Board meeting upcoming. I will be joining along with Mayor. The League of Policy, League of California Policy Committee meetings this week, end of the week. We're in separate committees, but we have Friday scheduled. I attended SCAG meetings for three meetings, the main focus. I provided our city manager with all the information, more than he probably would like. But for housing, pre, basically prefab housing, opportunity to use that along with large amounts of information, reports on the Olympics, Paralympics coming in 2028 and info for our city about our city involvement. I know there's a committee working on that and being a city hub. And next week, we have a SCAG leadership retreat for two years, two days to plan for the next year as well. Thank you.
And I'll just note that the Budget Committee did meet on the 29th. Also was suggested earlier in the meeting, but all five council members were at the Calabasas High School Senior Awards Night on June 2nd. And last but not least, the Foundation for the Lost Virginous Schools had a casino night, the Casino Royale Event, which was on the 6th of June. I attended. It was a great fundraiser and a successful event for the school district.
Did you win?
I did not win. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, just one item. And I sent an email to the council today about, that I'd received from SCE and I think it's important to share with our community. SCE is hosting some webinars tomorrow and then again next week. And we'll get this information out. But they're looking at how PSPS events are handled for this upcoming fire season. And what we're hearing is probably more PSPS events and a longer duration for these events, especially on the Milo circuit. I think is what they've wanted to, really, I'm teasing about the Milo circuit. We have our, our Assistant City Manager lives on the Milo circuit and so. But, but there is a concern about the, again, the, the frequency and the duration of these. And so we'll get more information and be sharing that with council.
And Councilmember Weintraub, one more comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say that there was a power outage and I'm forgetting the exact date, a few weeks ago. And it was rather large. It impacted from Mulwood, all the circuits, from Vacasa to Milo and most in between. And it was a few hours for some, less for others. And I reached out to SCE to find out what happened. And the answer was a squirrel this time. And the last power outage was from a raccoon. And it's completely unacceptable that in a community like ours, SCE cannot protect their equipment from everyday wildlife. These aren't even wildlife. I mean, the fact that our, we would lose power for hours because of a squirrel. So we've reached out to SCE and asked for a meeting. So we've reached out to SCE and asked for a meeting for staff to meet with them. And I think it was two weeks ago, and we still haven't heard back. But I just want the community to know that we are doing everything we can to try to stay on top of Edison, but it's completely unacceptable that a squirrel can shut down power in a city like Calabasas for multiple hours on a Friday evening. So it was a squirrel this time, a raccoon last time, and, I mean, it's unacceptable. So it's just, we're going to stay on top of SCE until we can get some resolution.
All right. Thank you for that. And with that, we will conclude and adjourn the City Council, which will reconvene for a special meeting on June 17th and 18th to do our strategic initiatives. And then the next regular meeting of the City Council will be held on June 25th.